It is 6 o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and call this May 3 meeting of the Anchorage School Board to order. We have all board members in attendance in the boardroom. Board Member Donnelly, Board Member Bellamy, myself, Elise Viqueles, Board Members Mitchell, Board Member Hildy, and Board Member Holloman. And at this time, we're going to do our flag salute, and I'm going to ask young Henry to please do that for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its essence, one nation under God, indivisible, with one body and justice for all.
All right, before we begin, I would like to acknowledge with gratitude the Denine people, both past and present, who have lived on these lands since long before Anchorage was here. May we all be good stewards of these lands. Chinon.
My name is Emily Hickox, and I am the student representative to this board. I was elected to serve through the Student Advisory Board. Although my votes are advisory only, I offer a student voice to this body. We would like to welcome you to our meeting, and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars.
Next up is the approval of the agenda. Can I get it first?
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Are there any changes, modifications, or requests to change it? Is there anybody in opposition of the agenda as written? Seeing none, it unanimously passes. At this point, the next item up is comments from some of our outgoing board members. And I'm going to go ahead and let, I guess we'll start with Member Mitchell.
Well, I have to say I have competing feelings today. I am sorry to be leaving this group of really passionately committed public education advocates. I appreciate every single one of you and the perspective that you have brought and the collegiality that we've had on the board and the seriousness that everybody has, you know, approached their work with. And Dr. Bishop, what a three years it's been. Just wow. I've learned a lot. It's been an honor to serve the city, and I am sad to be stepping down. On the other hand, I'm happy to join my husband in retirement. And he and I are going to Hawaii for the first time for me, right after I get off the board. So I just, I'm proud of the work that we've done. I'm particularly proud of the collaboration that we all went through for the two policies that were passed at the last meeting. That was very, just a nice note to step away on. And I also feel that we are turning this over to some really dedicated people who are going to do a great job on the board as well. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you to Star for her leadership. Thank you to Tamagastiguezler, who got me here, for her amazing service on the board. Kathleen Punkett, all the people who went before us. We have now somebody who's going to be rejoining, who has some prior experience. So it's been a really wonderful experience, challenging, a growth experience. And again, I just appreciate every single one of you all so much. And everybody, I also want to say to the administrators, you guys are, you people, I mean that in a gender-neutral sense, are just the best. The turnaround, you know, I ask a question and it gets answered immediately. You guys are as passionate as we are up here. I think that the Anchorage School District is, there's room for improvement, obviously. There's always room for improvement, but I think that everybody here does a fantastic job. Our teachers are second to none, and I just really appreciate the work for our young people. It's, you know, it's the most important thing, I think, that we can be doing. So thank you to everybody who contributes to the success of the Anchorage School District every single day. Board Member Hildy.
See if I can reach. I did not plan to talk. But I will just say thank you for this wonderful opportunity to serve alongside all of you and to see the exemplary work of everyone in our district. I am working with other boards around the country. I can say that ASD has got the best of the best. It's just incredible. And the dedication to professionalism and focus on children, that's when this board shines, that's when this district shines. And I'm super excited to see the progress on our three board goals over the next, you know, five years to get reading to 80%. That's going to be really fun to watch, so I know you can do it. And so just thank you. I have learned so much from all of you, and just your heart for children is inspiring. So thanks.
What a six, crazy six years it's been. When I look back at all of the different board members, both those that I'm serving with today and the names that you've mentioned, you know, in the past, everybody has contributed to my growth as a board member, and I'm just appreciative to everybody who has helped me and been patient with me along the way, as I have learned and grown as an individual. I am excited and optimistic and hopeful for where this district is going to go. Working with you has been an absolute honor. You have put together a team that I have never seen a team that has worked so well together. I'm one person. I'm one person of seven. I'm one person of many. I am just one person, but I know that I'm the best in our educational system and to give the choices that I believe all of our children need, and that's what I have worked very hard to do over these six years. It has been an absolute honor. I am so thankful to the community, to, you know, the administration, to all the board members, to my family. You guys have just been so patient with me and very appreciative. And so I want to make sure that we pass this off in a very positive, happy way. And so I am ready to do the next thing in our agenda.
Before you do that, Madam President, may I interrupt and just want to share from administration, as well as other board members, our gratitude for the team that assisted. And we have a going-away gift for you and hope that you can remember your work for young people in our city and really, truly, all around Alaska with some of our partnerships. So I'm honored to serve the Anchorage School District and honored to be your superintendent. Thank you.
All right, guys, are you ready? The last thing I get to do. It is now the Anchorage School District 2020 to 2021 School Board is now adjourned. Signee Day.
As the superintendent of the Anchorage School District and temporary chair of this meeting, I would like to call the meeting back to order. At this time, I would also ask for Youth Court Judge Yuli Song and Alaska Supreme Court Justice Peter Mossen to administer the oath of office to swear in our newly-elected board members. Please come forward Carl Jacobs, Pat Higgins, Kelly Lessons, and Dora Wilson.
Good afternoon, everyone, or good evening. In addition to my duties as a justice on the Supreme Court, I had the privilege for about a decade to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Anchorage Youth Court. And it's a great organization, and I just want to say on behalf of the organization how much we appreciate the support that the Anchorage School District has given it over the years. And I would also like to say how honored we are that the school district has, on a number of occasions, invited a judge from the youth court to administer the oath. So with that, I will turn it over to Chief Judge Yuli Zhang to administer the oath. If you would all raise your right hands, please. Move your microphones.
Aye.
Aye.
Can state your name.
Kelly Lessons.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alaska.
And the Constitution of the State of Alaska.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a school board member.
As a school board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you. We're going to take a brief at ease to sign and notarize the paperwork, and I would again give my appreciation to Judge Yuli Song as well as Peter Mossen for coming and assisting us with the swearing-in. That is the most fun. I now call this board meeting back to order, and I would like to entertain nominations from the board for the slate of officers.
Would like to nominate Margot Bellamy for president. Andy Holloman for vice president. Carl Jacobs for clerk. And Kelly Lessons for treasurer.
Thank you. Member Wilson. Are there any objections to the nominations for officers? Oh, was there a second? Was there a second? Sorry. That was Mr. Holloman.
Second.
Thank you. Any objections? Seeing none? The motion carries. Congratulations, and I'm going to turn over the gavel to the new board president, Margot Bellamy. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And thank you, fellow board members. We are going to continue with our agenda. All right, next on our agenda is our Community Engagement Section E. Our military, we do not have a military report, neither do we have board conference committee or community outreach, written reports. So now we, that brings us. Yes, we do have a Student Advisory Board report. Emily?
Last Thursday, we had our last Student Advisory Board meeting for the year. We discussed sort of how we've done the past year, as well as what we're looking to see in the next year. They're hoping to get back to in-person meetings, hopefully here, and more collaboration with the school board. We also had elections, and so we have a new vice president, secretary, and public relations officer. And then we'll be having special elections for the president and student representative position in the fall. They're just sort of waiting until we can get sort of what the group for next year will look like, and then looking for a president to lead them. So that is it. Yeah, they'll be back in the fall and hopefully have some new in-person to send to you guys.
Madam President, board, I would like to publicly thank our Student Advisory Board lead on our school board. She is graduating in one week, and so this is her last board meeting, and we're so proud of her. And she will be graduating, I believe, on the 15th, 14th, that's right, next Friday. And she is going to University of Southern California. And so we just congratulate you, and Emily, you have been wonderful, and thank you so much. And Madam President, turn it over to you. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And Emily, you have been, I don't know what I'm going to do, you're not my little elbow partner anymore, but I absolutely have enjoyed working with you. You bring a certain, not just depth of thinking, but a radiance to the board. And with that, while you are getting ready to go away, we have a little something for you.
Thank you, guys, so much. It's been, I think this might be the third time that I've said this is my last meeting, but this time it's real, I'm going to college. But in all seriousness, it's been a super great learning experience for me, serving on this board for so long and seeing all the processes and what kind of goes on behind the scenes in our district. And big thank you to all of you guys, those board members who just left, and I'm sure those of you who are just joining, you guys do so much great work for our district. And as students, we don't totally see all of it, but we do really appreciate what you're doing, and I'm super hopeful for the future of our district and for my student advisory board. I think that they've got great things coming, and so, yeah, just thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, Emily. And now we're moving on to item F, goal monitoring. Dr. Bishop? Thank you, Madam President. And on today's goal monitoring, we're working towards providing the board information on reading, and so we'll continue that, and Mike Fleckenstein will cue it up. And before we move forward, I just wanted to share that in the previous meeting, we shared FastBridge, which is our K2 student data, student learning data. And to share a little bit of a difference of what we're going to look at today, this is, of course, MAP Growth. It's a totally different assessment. And if you think about the younger kids or younger students, we really want to know how they are progressing to become readers by third grade, strong readers. And so part of that FastBridge is a very, very quick assessment. It takes one to five minutes. It's done multiple times, more so to monitor, and it really gives information about students' correct to incorrect responses, which would have their teachers adjust instruction, perhaps more time, change techniques, change the pedagogy, or perhaps change a grouping assignment. The MAP data is a little bit more in-depth, as you'll see, and it really is an assessment that we give third through ninth grade, and I'll share a little more on that, but we're looking at just third grade because this goal monitoring is about the board's goals until 2026. And our reading goal is really looking at third grade, and it's going to determine what students know and what they are ready to learn next. And this assessment not only looks at their achievement of what they know now, but also in relation to how much they've grown from the last time they've taken the assessment. So I just wanted to share that although we're talking about reading again, this is a very different assessment, and it's, this assessment can look at a student's understanding and comprehension as they move on, whereby FastBridge curriculum-based measures do not. They're just looking at the progress to become that reader. So without further ado, I will just move through these slides. And here are our goals, and the reading proficiency really is about 40 to 80%. We're moving from about 40% on PEACs, which is our statewide test, to 80%. So in response to the board's goals, administration is working to craft, and we have crafted, and we'll utilize this year's PEACs data, to look at interim goals, to give you bits and pieces of the information along that path. So we're going to not only look at student achievement in K through three, but also student growth in K through three that will lead to the reading proficiency goal. And really, what we're going to do is break down the data by grade and level, ethnicity, and student groups of interest. And we think about such things as what percent of students are at or above the benchmark, the benchmark is what you want to hit, what percent of students are below the benchmark, what is the growth category distribution for students at or above the benchmark, and those below. We also want to know, and we can assess this from our MAP test, which students are on track to actually meet the benchmark on PEACs. We can interpolate the data very strongly to determine which students from day one are really set on that trajectory to meet that goal. So with that, the MAP Growth Assessment is generally given fall, winter, spring, and it is a universal screening process that we use generally, again, from grades three through nine. We use this in our schools. However, this year, the grade levels that utilize MAP ubiquitously are all through the district, were third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. And specifically, due to secondary schools not coming back until March, they missed some of that winter window. So to give you some information, it is a dynamic assessment, which means it will change with students. It's not set standards that they're providing. They're actually going to give students questions higher and higher and higher to see how far they can go. And the next time they sit on the assessment to take it, it's going to leave off where they left off. So I love this assessment because every student who sits down will get about 50% right or wrong, and then the test ends. So it's really determined by their level, which will allow us to gain information about their learning. This year, there were 8,583 students that took MAP Growth Reading, ranging from grades K through 12, but our set that we're going to look at in grade three is a little over 2,100. Actually, 2,173 students took it this year. And again, we're looking at the interim goal of reading proficiency, and it'll focus on grade three. I shared a little bit about norms last time, the national norms for FastBridge. Interestingly enough, the national norms for this assessment actually changed, not due to the pandemic, the prior norms that were established in 2015, which all our data looked at prior to this time. And basically, it's a comparison. How do students do today, and how do they compare against the normative group? And that normative group in 2015 was made up of millions of students. The more students take it, the more nationally representative it is, not just a single small group. It adjusts for achievement level, it reflects their effortful behavior in learning, but the new norms in 2020 actually were data taken from 2015 to 2018. Interestingly enough, even before the pandemic, the normative percentile ranking of students actually decreased. So in reading achievement for third grade, the difference in the 50th percentile, the middle-of-the-road score in 2020 is about 1.7 percentile points lower. So again, remember the percentile, we're going to talk about percentages of kids, but the percentile is that 100 mark. And what used to be the norm in the middle, if I took it in the 2015 norms and had a raw score that landed me in the middle, it's going to move me over about two slots to the right. So it's moving me higher, but which definitely demonstrates that students, actually, their achievement is lower because it moved the whole norm. So we're talking about that bubble in the middle. But for this group, I just wanted to share that it's over 700,000 students, over 5.5 million test scores go into these norms. And it's from students from all 50 states that are into this norm. So here are our student counts to share with you. These are how our students, these are who are our students that took this assessment. So if you look at third grade at the bottom, I gave you that number already, that 2,173, and the students who were in school to take the assessment this winter make up these student groups by ethnicity. And we have to ask ourselves, do these students, because it's about 1,000 less than the prior norm? norm, how do they make up? Who was here and who wasn't here? And when we looked at all of our students, they wasn't that off. The ones that found the most range, which were about 2% off, was in the multi-ethnic. So for instance, Alaska Native that you see that took winter of 2021, the district as a whole is about 8.7. And so what we want to see is, the district as a whole, are the third graders a representative group of our, of our students? And with them, yes, the answer is yes. Multi-ethnic on this is 18.82. And in prior years, it was 15.9. And that's the one that's really the furthest off. The others are within one percentage point or below. So these students in third grade do represent the ethnicities of the larger group in the Anchorage School District. Just to share, the largest student ethnicity group is white, and the smallest is black students. The student count for our interest groups, and we share these interest groups because these are reportable ones for ESSA or the federal reporting. And we look at economically disadvantaged English language learners and students with disabilities. And as a whole, these are right on the mark as well. These are representative of the larger students within the district. So the, the big number there is the economically disadvantaged makes up 47% of all students who took the, the assessment in third grade. So here we are. How did we do for the distribution for students on track for PEAKS growth? In green, you will see the number of students or the percentage, not percentile now, I'm back to percentages. If you took all the kids and said, how many were on benchmark or above, or how many were below benchmark, this shares these data. And just for your information, the ASD benchmark is from the 40th percentile to the 60th. So right in this area here. So these are the percentiles. So if the kids fell within here, they met our benchmark. And overall, 47% of our students in grade three are at or above the reading benchmark for MAP Growth. The student group with the most students at or above the reading benchmark was the white student group at 62%. And the second highest group at or above was the multi-ethnic student group at 45%, followed by the Hispanic group at 43. And within ethnicity, the student group with the lowest percentage of grade three students at or above the reading benchmark was Alaska Native. And the student group with about almost 26%, followed by the Native Pacific Islander with 26% as well. Alarming is on this is that the rate of grade three students at or above the reading benchmark for MAP actually dropped 14 percentage points, moving from 61% from the fall of 2019 to 47% that you see now. So the red are the students who are below benchmark. And the difference is about 14%. I do want to caution though, remember, they were different norms, number one. And one was an assessment at the beginning of the year, one was the assessment in the middle of the year. And teaching matters for students, time with their teachers and lesson matters. And so again, we can't draw too many conclusions. They're not a matched set because again, these third grade students did not take the assessment before. They were, we did not have a winter assessment for these children because they were second graders in the winter. So this is just giving just a little bit of insight about where kids are today and how are they doing? And towards your goal, we have a lot of work to do. And I, I'm sure you would agree. Looking at the distribution of the benchmark for the interest groups that we look at, again, we have economically disadvantaged, about a third of them are on benchmark. Same with English language learners. But our students with disabilities are at 16% on benchmark. The majority, nearly 84% of them are not on benchmark. And if we know they're not on benchmark, we can interpolate this assessment so tightly to PEAKS that we can understand that without additional instruction, different pedagogy, small grouping, that they, they most likely, without some kind of input, their learning behavior won't change. So we could see that they would not be successful unless we, the adults in the system, do something. It's on us. Parents, teachers, administrators, everybody, school board members. Yep, everybody. So, but we will do it. All right. So another thing is what's on track for PEAKS? And this is one I want to share with you. Although they're on track in ASD, we look at the middle of the percentile, the bubble right here. We have about a 99% prediction that they will pass a benchmark on PEAKS if they are at the 61 percentile right here. So our state test is highly aligned to national standards and national tests everywhere. And if a student hits the 61 percentile, different than percentage, percentile, they are most likely going to be at or above benchmark on the state assessment. And so when you look at that number, how many students are here on this percentile marking? These are the data ahead of you, just to share the difference between the bubble or boom, we absolutely know with great certainty that they're on the progress. This is what we call the on-track-to-be-proficient. And based on the Winter 21 MAP growth scores, the student group with the most students on track in PEAKS was the white group at 42, almost 43%. The second highest group, or rather, it's 20, yeah, 42.79%. The second highest for that was the multi-ethnic, followed by the Hispanic group again, same as last time for the percentages of students in the whole. But if you look, this is only about 28% of the students are absolutely on track for, for our entire system. And again, that would be that they could meet the 61st percentile. And within the ethnicity, the student group with the lowest percentage on PEAKS, Alaska Native, American Indian, followed by the Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander. If you recall, when we looked at FastBridge, these two student groups were also that we looked at in our younger children, that were just, you just progress word sounds, blending of words, blending of sounds, all the early skills. It was, it mirrored this. And so those early skills and foundational skills matter. I think that is why those new board members that are board part of President Bellamy's strong push at the legislature was, we need to focus on reading. Let's, you know, put our efforts to this. Let's support the foundational skills of reading. It does matter for success later on. And interestingly enough, again, it's very similar to the percentages. When you look at the percentile of students, where they need to hit that percentile, the percentage of students that are on track also dropped 13%. We had 41% of our students in the fall of 19 were on track to meet peak proficiency, and that has dropped to 28 that you see in front of you. And again, if 28.39 are, 70% of our district, third graders are not. That is the work before us. That is our work to bring dreams and hopes and skills to all young people in our district. When you take a look at the student groups, and again, these are self-reported when parents sign their children up. We have economically disadvantaged English language learners and students with disabilities. These data also demonstrate a lot of growth is needed. Students with disabilities, 93% of our third graders who have an IEP are not likely to pass PEAKS unless we do something in changing that learning trajectory and changing the learning behavior. Generally, we give you, as, as we did last time, kind of a matched set. How has a student grown over time? And I shared a little bit that we really can't do this because you need at least two testing times to look at the exact children from, this is how they were here and this is how they grew over time. Sadly, we only have the winter, but we will be able to look at students from winter to the end of the year. The, the spring score, we'll be able to have that just for the time that they've been in school. But we don't have any comparison of our third graders from the year prior. We just did not take the assessment last winter. But we will have comparable data in the future. Again, we're looking for the second iteration of MAP. And again, MAP, the students get on, it's electronic, it's gonna start where they left off before, they're gonna answer questions. It has the same frustration level for all students. 48 to 52% when they hit right or wrong, it just ends and gives them what's called a RIT score, which is a RASH unit. It's just a unit of measurement. And the, and the students actually, just as a principal and a teacher, it's one of the most motivating assessments that you can give kids because they get instant feedback, kind of like a video game. They get the score before their teacher does. It shows up right in front of them. So they actually like to, you know, monitor their own progress, share what a RIT is. They don't really even know what it is, but they just know it's a score. And so it, it's delightful to see students taking advantage of their own learning in this way. So for the discussion and really in summary, the student groups struggling with reading are the same groups as we've seen for many years, and our Alaska Native American Indian student group, and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander, as well as our, our black student groups. Economically disadvantaged and our students with disabilities also struggle. The rate of grade three on the PEAKS has dropped, and the rate of grade three students at or above the benchmark has dropped during this time. Again, they're different norms. This is the first time any of these students have taken this assessment. And I also want to share this, the K2 map, there is a K2 map, but it looks very different. It's very picture oriented. And the MAP Growth in third grade is more words because they expect students to read. And so it looks very different as well. And so I just want you to take that in mind as well. We look to improvement just by taking the test a second time. That actually happens statistically, the second time someone takes an assessment, it does go up. So those are the things in mind. It doesn't lessen the concern. This is highly concerning. And we look that we can really support our students post-COVID and wrap services, get serious about teaching, focusing on children, focus on children and their essential skills, fundamental skills. Because when we get it right by third grade, the world opens up to our students. When we don't, schools get very narrowed for our students. There are less opportunities in our schools when students don't have the skill of reading. And thank you. And I, I did want to share that taped in front of you, there is a progress monitoring questions and outcomes, although we did not, we have not been following the protocols that we learned simply because a lot of the data we haven't had, but we just are practicing and building our muscle about talking about student learning data. And just so you know, I will always say student learning data, not the data or the kid. It is about their learning and it is a behavior that we hope to improve every time they're in front of our teachers, enjoying school and learning. So with that, Madam President, that is the progress monitoring for today. I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Are there any questions? Any questions? Yes, Dora? I'm sorry.
Member Wilson?
You, you may not have this information. I was just curious, do we know how many, because you said it was in-person, students that are in-person, correct? So the students that were virtual did not, just confirming, they did not take those assessments?
Through the President to Member Wilson, that is correct. We have used other learning data or other learning programs to assess students that are in PDAIA or Frontier or Family Partnership or ASD Virtual. We have used iReady in the past, but this assessment was just for those that came to us because it is proctored, just to be able to speak about a student group. We needed to assure the testing area and, and the, the conditions for testing. We look that hopefully we'll have more assessment because we have grown over time as our parents have, have gained confidence in ASD schools being in-person. That's a great question.
Just one follow-up. So do we have the scores from last year? I, I just haven't seen them. Do you have, do we have the scores from last year to compare to this year?
Sure.
To see, and not right now necessarily.
Oh, no. That's a great question too, through the President to Member Wilson. We did not take the assessment last year, although it is a fall, winter, spring. Generally, there was an allowance prior to our new board goals that we did not assess unless you wanted to in winter. And that winter time, we have a fall of 2019, and that's the most comparable, where I showed the, the drop in 13 or 14%. That's the, the last full time that we had it. We did not have it in the winter or spring of 20 due to the pandemic, nor did we have it in the fall this year because of the pandemic. Because again, it is an assessment that is proctored. Basically, someone's in the, the room with the children. But that's a great question. And, and so we're hoping to have at least some growth from winter to spring this year. Students are actually probably in the next week or so gonna sit back down and show us what they know. It takes about a half an hour. Any other? Yes. Member Lessons?
All right. I think I've turned this on. Great. To what extent are our students screened for dyslexia in these early formative grades to be able to help diagnose problems on the early end of things?
Sure, that's a great question. Through the President to Member Lessons, I'd, I'd like Jody Knudsen, who assists with some assessment, to come forward, but to assist. What we do do is our progress monitoring on FastBridge is generally our screener for all children. And what it does is just picks up, you know, we have a letter sound fluency and a, and a blending. And what it'll do is pick up that, a skill that we do something automatically, automaticity we can do in time and we kind of own it. And what happens with that is that under a certain amount of time, we look at norms for students meeting benchmarks and, you know, they can read so many words a minute or say so many sounds a minute. And when that, those data come back and it is not with the expected group, we have to do additional testing to find out, well, is it fluency? Is it sound? It could be hearing. You know, some children, they're just not hearing the, the sounds or hearing their teacher. We pick up actually some other, you know, problems that, with learning that way. So can you share how that works when we have? And we do assess and progress monitor students three times a year in K1 and 2.
Okay. Through the President to Member Lessons, yeah. We start with that benchmarking of students to see who's at risk. And once we've identified kids that are at risk and showing gaps in some of those skills we typically see in kids with dyslexia, like phonological awareness, or really those phonics skills of being able to associate the sounds with the letters, we'll do additional assessments. So that's where the diagnostic assessment comes in. Teachers look at discrete skills, and you can go more in-depth with phonemic awareness. So there's different levels. And if kids have dyslexia, you're gonna see indicators with that. So our school psychologists sometimes do it, but our teachers, our intervention specialists, all of them can do that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? You good? Okay. Let's hold on. So we will go to Member Higgins and then Member Donley.
Thank you, Dr. Knudsen.
Is that working better? That's working, that's too loud. Okay. I appreciate the information. And, and I guess I look at this kind of data, I like to look at trends. I like to see what changes are going on and assessment of what's been happening during that period of time and what's working and what isn't. And that's kind of the, the piece that I'm curious about right now. I'm definitely, you know, we have to address the underperforming, they're not meeting it. By the same token, we've got kids that are in different grades already at different levels, and they have a, you know, historically in, in schools, not just Anchorage, they tend to not continue to advance. And that's a concern that I have, is that opportunity for them to stay ahead if they're there while we play catch-up as well for the others. So I would love to see, you know, a five-year type, this is what the data So I would love to see, you know, a five-year type, this is what the data shows, the, your assessment of what has been working. And if we're going to go from 40 to 80 or whatever the numbers are, why? I mean, what is the plan to really address that? Because that's an aggressive move and, and goals are one thing, achieving it is a whole different ballgame and sometimes you have to give up some things in order to do it. So some assessment, some sort of your input into why the numbers all the way they are over time and what's been happening in regards to these results, because we obviously want better results than what we're getting.
Through the President to Member Higgins, that's, that's really a, a great, you know, articulation of the why and really a question around that. As the Board made up goals this past year and a half really, hearing from the community about wanting all children to succeed and knowing that reading is an access skill, just sharing that we want 50% of our students to achieve or 60%, it would be like looking at this and saying, okay, everybody over here, I don't need to teach you because I only am gold here. So it is a lofty goal, 80% because that is the mark that through core instruction in classroom, the evidence and the research demonstrates that 80% of students should be able to, with quality, high instruction in a core classroom, be able to become a reader. So since that time, we really did look at a, a reading-based program, changed our reading program. Sixty-eight members got together on a committee and chose a science-based reading. We have struggled with the implementation, initially just, it was very different, initially just the standards for learning jumped, if you, you remember when the Alaska standards came about. And so we're really going to focus on the integrity of the implementation with our teachers, because it does matter that they become fluent in sounds and letters. And so actually, prior to this year, the research in regard to balanced literacy with Lucy Cockens was something that came before the Board about, you know, desiring to do this. This fall, Columbia University, where Lucy Cockens works, said, actually, we were wrong. We have to say that you have to have a strong phonics-based reading program for all, like that is essential in order for kids to get there. So that was delightful because Anchorage School District, and that's what the state law is about, Anchorage School Board already adopted a science-based reading program. We're just going to build our muscles around it to get better. But one of the things we've been put into place is called WIN and it's what I need. And so basically, students that are above grade level, which you bring up a good point, this assessment map shares with you what kids know. And by saying it's dynamic, if I'm a third grader and I test at fourth grade, the next time I sit down, I'm going to only get fourth grade work. And so it's always in front of us about, boy, these students know more than we're teaching them. We have to change our instruction to keep them learning. They, we have a goal in the district of, if you're here for a year, you grow a year at least, even if you're advanced, or if you're behind, you need to have makeup growth. So we pay attention to both of those. But the what I need now time is not only for students that need to be re-taught, it's also for students who need more in-depth or advancement or acceleration. We've also looked at broadening our use of Ignite as well as other programs in middle and high school to teach to everyone at higher levels. And so those are some changes that be happy to share with the Board and do some write-ups. I agree, it does need to look over time, how are we doing? But believe it or not, just the, the wackiness with the AMP, the, that used to be the test before PEAK. So we had SBA, AMP was the test, that didn't work for a while, so we didn't have longevity on that. PEAKS was administered after the first year, we had a pandemic or the third year. So we just, the data have been all over the place. This year, that was one of the reasons that the Department of Education, even knowing that the majority of students for the majority of the year were not face-to-face in the United States, they still wanted a baseline. And so it was mandatory. There weren't any waivers given to states to not take their state assessment. And so we had, we're going, kids, our students took PEAKS and we're going to see where they are so that we can begin to build that. But the longevity over time is something that is essential. One of the things that Member Holloman mentioned, that because the MAP test is really trusted with our parents and our students and our teachers, the state did look at, they did go out to an RFP to actually get the MAP assessment, because they can be dynamic now and then they can throw in standards per grade level to give you a content as well as a growth, you know, a criterion reference test as well as this growth. And they haven't come around to it, the pandemic, again, the pandemic, being out of school, the whole, you know, everything is just kind of crazy. But I do know that the State Board wants to look at that again. And if we do have that, we will have MAP data for years and years and years that we could really look at, because they're going to place in the criterion reference by standards in with the growth, just so that you can see how far can they go? But yes, they also know grade level. So those are great questions and, and I think we, we really aim for all students, because I would, I would, it would be difficult to say, well, you know, some, some can't or some won't. We really look for the instruction in the classroom to be robust. So great questions. Did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I do. And I appreciate the reference to phonics. I remember going to some national leaders in that well-recognized, talking about the impact of phonics and kids that were on phonics were doing great in the country as a whole and those without were not. And the difference was so radical that some states actually started a program to retrain teachers. And I know that here, they were really focused on hiring teachers with certain, you know, backgrounds and different colleges doing differently. Where are we at as far as the school district as a whole with phonics and is it varying by, by schools, by classrooms, or is it adopted school district-wide yet or where are we at on that?
Through the President to Member Higgins. So about three years ago, we did adopt Reach for Reading, which is a book designed by the National Geographic. So it's actually a lot of, a lot of nonfiction embedded material, which is highly engaging for kids, you know, when you're reading about bugs and motorcycles and everything, sometimes they're not into fiction, but it's very predictable text. And so it does utilize a phonics program. So our, all of our schools have phonemic awareness and phonics. And the difference for those that don't know, you, if you think about phonemic awareness, you can do it in the dark, it's just about sounds. And phonics is reading the sounds, putting letters with the sounds. So we do have that across the district. We are struggling with the implementation. We had it for a year, you know, through the, the earthquake, there was quite a bit of pushback in utilizing standards-based reading material, but we're, we're building capacity, building the understanding of the reasons why. And the research isn't that students can't learn, but having phonics ensures that all students can grow. A lot of students, if you think about spelling or really in biology or something, when they come to a multi-syllabic word, having those strong base on phonics and phonemic awareness, they can figure out words and origins much better. So we are working on that. The expectation is that it is taught. We have what we call non-negotiables or priorities, but really the phonics part of that is about 10 to 15 minutes a day. It's not a giant, giant ask, it's just a consistent ask that also if it's aligned as we matriculate grade to grade or school to school, because we have so much mobility, students won't lose ground if we adults organize ourselves collectively. Member Donley.
Thank you, Madam President. So to go back to January 2019, we had the report, the survey that was conducted of the classrooms and, and the efficacy that the new phonics program was being implemented. I think my memory of it was that less than 30% of the classrooms were fully utilizing the, the new curriculum. So what exactly have we done since then to try to get to implementation of, of the phonics program?
Sure. So it's not just a phonics program through the President to Member Donley, it's actually a full-scale reading program that has many different parts to it. And again, we have priority plans, meaning these are the priority for the time that you have with children, because again, the, the textbook and the program, it's like a Disneyland, you can do a million different things a day and if you did them, it'd take four hours and we don't have four hours. So from that time that we shared, that's some of the things that we're doing, our walkthroughs to see and to audit, are we using our programs? We found out that we weren't shortly thereafter, as we began to really implement some stronger work in that regard, we had a pandemic and we went home. We haven't been in very structured ability to be able to walk into classrooms and work with our teachers. We have however aligned on our canvas that teachers, when they were teaching from home, so that alignment really, I think, assisted teachers in understanding that aligned curriculum that we share, there is value to it, because some of it, it was just a value, you know, we, we heard in public testimony, it was just a value of if I have to be aligned, I'm taking away my freedom to teach. And basically, the alignment isn't, our freedom of like, the art of what we do comes with that freedom, but our learning standards and bringing kids to pace is what that alignment is about. So now that we are back in schools, we are using assessments, as I just shared with you, to know where we are with the research from Columbia that Lucy Cockens shared, that yes, there actually needs to be a strong phonemic awareness phonics program, not just balanced, just, and balanced literacy was looking, if you read a paragraph, she really taught cueing where you would, just so you know the difference, like, look at the pictures to try to figure out what the word is, try to look at the other words to figure it out. Now the research about reading is teach children to sound out words, it's about vocabulary that they, they know. And so you build vocabulary and teach how to understand the words, very similar to how we all learn a foreign language. And so we are retooling with the Board goals. We're hoping to have the Board's support, because at the time, I will share as well, Member Donley, the Board wasn't supportive of the work of the reading at the time. And so we look, not only with the state level, talking about statutory requirements in regard to good reading instruction, the Board's goal, we are ready and set and teachers are eager, eager to do well. When teachers do well, it's motivating to continue to, to, to teach more and to work with each other. So I look forward to, to the good work ahead. You do, you may have a follow-up?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, that sounds like Columbia is finally coming around this Spalding reading. I mean, it's, we've got it in five of our schools now. It's tremendously successful. I've been advocating that ever since I got on the Board. I was unaware that there was any Board opposition to putting our adopted curriculum into effect with efficacy. I thought we all, I thought we were all supporting that because it's actually the Board-adopted curriculum. So I'm surprised to hear that. But we're, you know, we're only a year or two years away from a curriculum review, I believe, again, with reading. And I'm once again going to advocate for maximizing the utilization of Spalding reading. I realize it takes teacher instruction and training to do that, but if you look at the schools in our district that are using it, they're tremendously successful with kids being reading in, even in first grade or kindergarten. So I'm just, once again, advocating for a heavy phonics-based curriculum.
Any other first round questions? Okay. Member Lessons, you had another question?
Thank you, Madam President. I guess the question is, what's the plan to change course? What's the plan to change resource allocation, to adjust, to better support our teachers as they go forth and do the work? What's next?
Thank you. Through the President to Member Lessons, that's, that's a great question. And some of the work around the research around quality, high-quality instruction classrooms is really to support teachers in understanding the value of it. So we are going to continue, and in fact, Member Higgins mentioned other states actually requiring coursework. I think part of the bill in which Senator Begich partnered in last year and then moved to this year, SB 111 and HB 164, really focuses on the support to teachers to understand the science of reading. That presently is not strong in university, but UAF is acknowledging the need in regard to preparing teachers for that. Teachers that, like myself, my college education was about balanced literacy, not understanding the value of science-based reading. And so we are retooling internally. We're continuing to work with our coaches to support teachers in understanding that. We are going to continue to support strong instruction in the classroom and work with teachers. To Member Donley's, you know, comments, I was, was called to task several times by Board members in regard to, we don't want principals in their classrooms looking at how they teach. We're using it, in fact, there were many grievances. Many Board members met with teachers and asked, you know, can the, can, can we not do this? And, and so it's just hard work. I mean, I just want everyone to know, changing what we've learned from the beginning of how we learned to teach to something new is hard work, just like changing during the pandemic. But I believe in our teachers, I believe in our administrators to do the work. We're going to learn together and hold each other accountable for the work that needs to be done, because the value to children i- is worth it. So professional development, support with tools, utilizing and understanding data and progress monitoring. And the progress monitoring for the really young children, you can catch things very quickly and change your instruction. So we can't let it go for three months and realize, oh, they didn't learn, they, they weren't picking up what I needed. So we utilize on a weekly basis and understanding. And, and truly, we're just coming together as a team and aligning our system around the value that you have for reading in your reading goal. Okay. Very good discussion. Any other questions, follow-ups at this time? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. We are now at public testimony on our agenda. The Board welcomes public testimony. We value public comment as it ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns and informs our decision-making process. There is a one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting. Testimony in excess of one hour will be heard at the end of the meeting or may be submitted in writing. Each person to inform you that you can finish your sentence. And with that... First up, telephonically, we have Danielle Kemp. Yes, we hear you, Mr. Kemp. You have three minutes.
All right. Well, thank you to the Board for this opportunity to speak this evening. Happy Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. My name is Danielle Kemp. I am a retired Army Combat Officer, teacher in the ASD, parent of two ASD students, co-chair of the Anchorage Education Association Human and Civil Rights Committee, Chair of the NAACP Anchorage Educations Committee, and President and Co-Founder of the brand spanking new Alaska Coalition of BIPOC Educators. Tonight, I am here to advocate for our Indigenous brothers and sisters and call them for the repeal and replacement of the permissive subsection of Board Policy AR 5127-B, Graduation Regalia. But before I do, I must send my congratulations over to our brand-new Board members on their victories and swearing in, as well as our newly-elected Board President, Margot Bellamy. Congratulations, y'all. I expect the very best from all of you and that you will work and live by your core values of potential, high expectations, accountability, safety, and responsiveness. I believe you will do the right, do right by our students and by our community and we will hold you accountable for all your actions and/or interactions. In 2019, the ASD passed AS Board Policy AR 5127-B, Graduation Regalia. According to this policy subsection, school administrators and not native elders or native people themselves determine what is culturally appropriate for graduation. The subsection even goes on to say that school district has unlimited, quote, discretion and authority to prohibit an item that is likely to cause a substantial disruption or material interference with the ceremony, unquote. This is a perfect example of how racism gets embedded within the institution itself, as this policy gives school administrative personnel the ability to unlawfully discriminate against a student based on their race, culture, or ethnicity. The ASD's new anti-racism instructional equity policy can help navigate situations just like these. The Graduation Regalia policy subsection itself is a perfect example of an inequitable policy and procedure as it limits the academic opportunity of Alaska Native graduates to graduate in their own culturally appropriate and chosen regalia. This undignified subsection of the regalia policy must be repealed immediately. We should not have to bargain for our right to exist either. We should not have to bargain for our right to exist either, physically, culturally, or otherwise. Thank you very much for, oh, do I have 30 seconds left? Oh, okay, 30 seconds, I thought that was the end. So if the district wants to do right by Alaska Natives, then it must remove this cultural barrier altogether and allow zero restrictions on Alaska Native attire. I thank you very much for your time, and y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Next, we have Prairie Doherty. Prairie, are you on the line?
Sure.
Thank you, welcome, and you have three minutes. It's star six, we lost you.
Okay, I'm unmuted.
Okay, there you go, we can hear you now.
Okay, hello. My name is Prairie Doherty, and I have been navigating the educational lives of my five children for the last 20 years. I have a bachelor's degree in education from the College of Idaho, and my children have attended schools in Florida, Utah, and Pennsylvania. Tonight, I am happy to give comment and testimony as to why Eagle Academy Charter School should be allowed to expand their charter to include seventh and eighth grades, and why this is so important to me and my family. I would love to see all of ASD learn from, model, and implement the amazing practices of Eagle Academy Charter School. And be able to achieve the incredible outcomes Eagle Academy has achieved as a national Blue Ribbon School. I can't believe what a difference I've seen in my two younger boys only in this one year since they started at Eagle Academy. And now that I've seen and felt the difference, I want to know why every child in ASD doesn't get the same incredible kind of education. Every child deserves to learn their foundational language, arts, and math skills as well and as thoroughly as my sons are learning and mastering them at Eagle Academy. I've heard you spend just over an hour tonight discussing how to help the elementary kids improve their literacy and math proficiency. The Spalding Language Arts and Saxon Math Program has worked wonders in remediating the educational fails my two youngest have suffered from their last four and six years in ASD. The difference I witnessed in their ability to spell and think and write on their own is astounding, and Eagle Academy has managed to do to do this to my boys during and even despite the most unusual academic year in their lifetime. After seeing my three oldest children move into the ASD middle and high school, I have often thought how disappointing that after years of volunteering and investing to give them the best possible elementary education I could give them, that so much of it got lost or undermined when they seemingly were thrown to the wolves in middle school. I have two older children who've been through Greenie Middle School and a short time at Mirror Lake, and the situations there are not ideal at all. My sixth grader testifies, well, she's now a ninth grader, but that she worked way harder in sixth grader, in her sixth grade year at elementary than she did in seventh grade, where she was even in the honors program. If I had had another better option for my younger boys, or that if I would have another better option for my younger boys for their middle school, I would totally take advantage of it. And I know so many other moms who would too, whose kids don't even go to Eagle Academy, who are better, who are desperate for a better middle school option. It would be so welcome to have the Eagle Academy model as an option for middle school. I would love to see the values, virtues, virtues, and high standard qualities that Eagle Academy has given my kids in just this one year carried through to their middle school years, where they, until they've become more established in knowing who they are, so that they can be their very best for high school and beyond. Please consider allowing Eagle Academy to expand their charter to include seventh and eighth grade. It would be a welcome.
Your time is up, thank you. Next, we have Amaya Yajak. I apologize if that is not your last name. Amaya, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. It's Amaya Iojak.
Iojak, thank you.
Yeah. Good evening, Dr. Bishop and school board members. My name's Amaya Iojak. I am speaking to you tonight on behalf of my fifth-grade class at Eagle Academy Charter School. My classmates and I are very excited about the possibility of staying at Eagle Academy for seventh and eighth grade during our class discussion on topic. Several students mentioned how much easier and less stressful life would be if there could attend middle school in a smaller environment with friends and classmates that bond with over time Eagle Academy. Making friends and finding your place is always going to be a part of of the social aspect of school. Being able to stay at Eagle Academy for seventh and eighth grade will allow us not to worry about the social aspect as much during our early teen years. Another major positive many students agreed on was that we would still be able to level for language arts and math. Many students enjoy the challenge of being able to level up for language arts and/or math and know that option won't be available at other middle schools in our area. Most of all, we enjoy our closed-knit class with 26 students in our grade level. We all get to know each other, and we grow together and work together. The friendship we've created with each other and bonds that we have with our teachers have shaped us into students and people that we are today, and would be appreciative of the opportunity to continue that moving forward into our middle school years. Thank you so much for listening and have a great evening.
Thank you, Amaya. You did great, thank you. Paige Saylor is next. Saylor, Paige Saylor.
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
There, thank you. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Dr. Bishop and school board members. My name is Paige Saylor. I serve on the Academic Policy Board for Eagle Academy Charter School. However, tonight, I would like to speak to you this evening as a parent of an Eagle Academy fifth grader, excuse me, on the hopeful possibility of adding seventh and eighth grade to our school. We are a recently retired military family, but while on active duty, my children spent their younger years moving around quite a bit. They would tell you that their least favorite thing about moving was having to make new friends while learning their way around a new school. As a parent, I've always put small schools at the top of my priority list when researching a new location. I have learned that what's best for my kids is a smaller learning environment where their teachers and classmates can not only grow together educationally, but also build character and camaraderie. Another item that is top of my priority list is curriculum. I have been lucky enough in all of our moves to find schools that teach Saxon math. As a former high school math teacher, this is by far my favorite curriculum for younger students, and I have sought out schools that teach it when we have moved states. Its repetition-based instruction truly gives kids that solid math foundation to succeed later on in high school. My 15-year-old used Saxon from kindergarten through sixth grade in three different schools. He is currently a sophomore in high school, has finished precalculus and AP Statistics with straight A's, and is set for AP Calculus as a junior. My fifth grader has also used Saxon, but in two different schools since kindergarten. Her love of math grows every day as she continually gains the confidence Saxon provides by the design of its curriculum. Lastly, part of the seventh and eighth grade proposal is to include two years of a foreign language. Having a foreign language as part of their daily curriculum for two consecutive years is a wonderful opportunity to further advance and prepare our kids as they move into their high school years. A K through eight school with a small class size and proven excellent curriculum would be an amazing addition to the Eagle River community. ASD prides itself on being a diverse school district with many school choices and varying options. Thank you so much for considering the addition of the seventh and eighth grade expansion to Eagle Academy Charter School, so we can continue to make ASD proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. And next, we have Dr. Paula Williams. Dr. Williams, are you on the line?
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome, yes, we have you, we hear you. You have three minutes.
Thank you, a good evening. I am Dr. Paula Williams, a proud member of Alaska Black Caucus, and one of the co-chairs of our education committee. I am testifying in support of the recruitment and retention of teachers of color. ASD, I believe that after the success of the last school board meeting, that you are more aware now than ever of how vital recruiting and retaining teachers of color is to our students' academic outcomes, especially for our BIPOC students. The district shows that having at least one teacher of color boosts overall academic performances, improves reading and math test scores, as well as improved graduation rates for our students. When students see educators that look like them, it gives them the confidence to know that they too can become educators, as well as reach any goal they set out to accomplish. And it's time to purposely establish initiatives to recruit teachers of color and provide them with structured support. ASD can retain teachers of color by positively acting on their input. Teachers need to know that their concerns have not fallen on their ears. Pay them better salaries, request their feedback regarding school programs and policies, and don't just say, but show them that they are valued and respected. Create welcoming, cultural, inclusive learning environments, and provide them with gift cards and centers to show appreciation for their service to ASD and the student population. I want to thank you all for your time, and I want to say congratulations to the incoming new board members, and congratulations, President Margot Bellamy.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Next, in person, we have Darrell Mitchell.
First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate the newly-appointed board members. I'm sure that you're more than happy to be in the position you are, and thank you for your service and the time to allow me and others to speak. I wrote something tonight, but I thought I would go off the cups this evening and talk about a little bit about myself. I'm, ever since I can remember, I've been a highly sensitive individual, and my sensitivity is geared towards mostly human behavior. It got to a point where I know how to manage myself without getting into much trouble with others, and I know the things to do and not to do to trigger people. With that being said, with this sensitivity, I sense that there's a profound problem on a global scale, I always think of in a general state, that there seems to be a catastrophic problem that we're dealing with. And even before COVID-19, these issues were always arising. And I question exactly the process of education and how we're educating our kids. Now, I understand the use of language and mathematics and how important these things are in our day-to-day life, but I always get the sense that there's something deeply and profoundly missing from our education as a whole planet. I have little nieces and nephews, I was actually born and uncle, and what I see from them, even though they are being educated, is this profound sense of fear and insecurity and frustration and even violence. And none of these things are being educated in any curriculum that I've ever seen. Maybe on a college level, but it's a college course, it's not something that's demanded of you. And I also get the sense that, as I speak to other people, whether it be online or face to face, it doesn't, I get the sense that we're not meeting facts. Like, if I were to say that human beings are violent, or if I were to say that you are violent, we're not, we're not meeting that reality. It's almost, it's like we have a disposition in front of that. These are the things that we're not learning in school. And I can say this for myself as an adult male who has been educated in America, that I never even considered the fact that I'm violent and that I'm afraid and I have this deep embedded insecurity in me and to look at it. And I feel like that, that's a part of education, probably the most profound part of education. How can I learn about facts of reality if I'm hiding in fear and completely unaware of it? So with all that being said, I would like for you all to consider to find a part of education that dives into, deep into our mental state as human beings. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our public testimony. Did any, do we have anybody else sign up? If there's anyone else in the room that would like to testify, you may come forward Okay, seeing no one, we will move on to our superintendent update.
Thank you, Madam President. I have just a few brief updates, and the first one, I'm delighted for you to meet someone. Our hiring season is upon us, and we've had some of our school leaders move, retire, change positions, and we are going to begin to introduce you to our new principals. Today and next week, we're going to focus on secondary, and then after that, we have two more elementary to hire, and then we will bring our slate, if you will, of elementary principals. So without further ado, I'd like Mr. Alan Wardlaw to please come forward. And he is here with his family. Alan was selected as the new Principal of Service High School. Alan, please introduce yourself and share some thoughts if you'd like.
Good evening, Madam President. Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Alan Wardlaw. I am from Baltimore, Maryland, and I am just honored and wow, amazed to be sitting here in front of you today as the soon-to-be Service High School Principal for the 2021-2022 school year. I came to Alaska with my wife, and we sat out here really to try something new for our family. We moved to Juneau, Alaska in 2010. We spent four years out in Juneau, and it was a great time with my wife and I, but it was difficult for me to break into education. I transitioned to Rock Balock off the Casco Quim River, and I taught there for a year. And while I was there, I had a conversation with Principal Williams of Clark Middle School, and she encouraged me to try to come to Anchorage and join the ASD family, and that was the best decision I've ever made in my life. I really would not be here without the grace of God, the love of my family, and the support of Mrs. Williams, and that opportunity to join Clark Middle School and be a part of the Clark Middle School family. And while there, while in ASD, it just was an opportunity to grow and reconnect with education, and reconnect with my passion of uplifting students, supporting families, and being a part of a community of educators that are here for children. So in that time at Clark Middle School, I was able to just feel at home and learn a lot about this district, about myself, and about our community and our children. So when the opportunity arose to apply to Service High School, I was nervous. And, you know, my wife will tell you, I did not, I did not feel confident about that with her support. You're here today, my daughter. I looked at those guys and I said, you know, I'm going to do this for you all, and we can change the trajectory of our family. And so, you know, now I'm here in a world where my daughter will see me be a school leader, and that is more than I ever, ever dreamed of in my life. So for Service, I want to first to say, go Cougars! And I know we have a long road ahead of us to connect and engage with our students and our families after being away from school for so long, but it's a challenge that I readily accept, and I look forward to supporting the Service High School community, the Huffman Community, my community where I live, where I raised my family for years to come. So with that, thank you for letting me sit here in front of you today, and I look forward to seeing you all.
Mr. Wardlaw? I would like to make one correction, and you did share, I'm just hoping that one of the best decisions falls after those two ladies up there, right? Yeah. That decision to come here is definitely after those two ladies behind you.
Yeah. And honestly, I wouldn't have them if I didn't come here to Anchorage. Honestly, it's been, it's been wonderful, and thank you for your support, I appreciate it.
You're going to do well, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you. Next update is something that Emily shared a little bit. We are having graduations, they are on track. Did want to let you know that with the emergency order 20, we were able to at least give five tickets, if not more, to families, depending on the size of the graduation, the size of the field that the graduations are going to occur on. I did want to notify the board that East High School did move to Diamond High so that they can offer seven tickets to each of their families. We're delighted for that, and just worked with the community at each school to be sure to meet that need. Our first graduation, which is always on the docket, it's my most exciting one, it gets us kicked off, has always been Whaley. And so on Wednesday, we start with Whaley graduation. In regard to a sports update with the emergency order, we have also moved to, because of outdoors and the science behind the virus spreading in an outdoor area, it does have more airflow that students do not need to when they're practicing and competing, wear masks outdoors, only at the times that they're perhaps on the sidelines or in the dugout when they would be close to each other, standing still, or being in a little dugout box. So that's really positive news for our students who participate in sports outdoors. In addition, our finalization of our indoor sports of wrestling and hockey, Dr. Johnson notified me that we're also increasing our guests at those for the last week to have, especially for our seniors, have more guests come watch their games. And my final update, and this was kind of apropos to one of the comments, I wanted to share a progress on a program that really is a collective of quite a few different departments here in ASD. It's called Lit Now, Lit Now AK. It's called TJK, and I'm trying to really learn and use that UPIC word well, but it's called, a UPIC speaker told me it's like, even though I'm not a UPIC speaker, like Lit Now, Lit Now AK, which is TJK, and it is working through a collaboration with our CTE and secondary schools to get students interested who want to teach, utilize the process of the middle college for the general education requirements, or an associate is what UAA is asking for and wants to partner, and we're soon, we're articulating that. We're want to utilize our two-plus-two program with UAF, which will support special education. UAA has a early childhood, as well as an elementary education and ELL certificates for teachers. This is a partnership around the state, so other school districts can work with Lower Yukon to be partners with them at their longhouse, our Kuselbeck Academy, utilize the middle college for the first two years, and we have started really, really with discussions on building capacity to have the third and fourth year paid for totally for students who want to participate. So we're working on that development and have quite a bit of funds already, ready to deposit into a foundation to pay for students. And the students basically, payback would be after they graduate, that they go back and work for the district that helps sponsor them. So this is the program. Again, it is ASD along with Lower Yukon in conjunction with UAA and UAF, and quite a few native corps that we've talked to, as well as the State of Alaska grant for teachers. And before we went too far down, I just wanted to share that it is coming to fruition, and we hope through our work at Bartlett High and King Tech that we diversify our teaching pool, candidate pool, for teachers for which to come and work for us, or anywhere around Alaska. And so with that, we will continue the outreach, but wanted to share this is absolutely draft form, but we are really negotiating the memorandums of understanding at this time about the work and the payments and all that. So wanted to share, a really exciting project is underway, so if you hear about TJK or Lit Now AK, we are quite proud of that, and it again, will be statewide through Kuselbeck. We, of course, do not want to get in the housing business, no boarding for us. So I just wanted to share that update. Thank you, Madam President, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Bishop on her update? Seeing none? Oh, Member Donnelly.
Well, I guess I'd first start with a point of order, because I had a question about the Eagle Academy non-action item, but since it wasn't brought up by the superintendent, two meetings ago, there was a point of order that we're not allowed to ask questions that were raised by the superintendent. So are we going to continue with that policy or change that policy?
Can you tell me what your concern is again now? Because I think that...
Two meetings ago, I attempted to ask a question of superintendent, and it was ruled inappropriate and out of order because it wasn't part of the content of her report. And I would like to ask a question tonight about Eagle Academy, its non-action item on our agenda, but it wasn't an item in her report. So under the prior ruling of the chair, it'd be inappropriate for me to ask that question. I'm asking, are we going to continue that policy or are we not?
Well, first of all, there was a different chair. From my perspective, I think what we should do is, I think the way that I would like to handle it as chair, I would like for the first round of questions, or follow-ups, and a follow-up, to be on the update. And if you will recall, I asked if there were any other questions. So I would like to split that up so that we first, so that we're not confused, we first discuss the report, and then you may talk about whatever you'd like.
Thank you.
And you can also pull it when we get to that, if you, the Eagle Academy one. So at this point, though, I will allow you to ask a question, Mrs. Donnelly, about Eagle Academy, if you choose to do it now.
Thank you, Madam President. I was reviewing the materials here, in the non-action item materials, I didn't see a recommendation from the administration. Is there a recommendation from the administration?
Through the chair to Member Donnelly, that's a great question. And just as a backdrop, the recommendations that we placed in the prior requests for charter schools to increase really were for time certain next year, so that impacted the budget, that's why we shared it. We do have a recommendation, I see that this is a very timely request, looking not at next year, the budget year that we already had, but the year after that, the board has plenty of, the board and administration has plenty of time to plan around the growth, and so the administration's recommendation would be that we would support that growth.
Thank you.
Any other follow-up questions on anything? All right, not seeing any. We are now at our consent agenda. Vice President Holloman.
Yes, I move to approve the consent agenda listed, which is memorandum 115, a personnel report.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All right, it's been moved in second that we accept the memorandum 115. Call for a vote. Katie, when you're ready. Okay. So online voting? Yes, we'll do, Emily first?
Yes.
Board members, please proceed to vote. It should have, it should have come up on your screen, on your computer. Okay, Dave has, he's a yes. I need to get to him. Yes. And that motion passes, seven yays. Okay, thank you. Now we're on to action items. We have one person signed up. We are now at our action items. An action item memo is first introduced by the vice president, and if seconded by another board member, I will open the floor for public testimony. Each person will have three minutes to testify. When 30 seconds remain, a chime will ring to inform you so that you can finish your sentence. After all testimony closes, I will open the floor for board discussion before finally calling for the official vote. The voting results will be displayed on the screen. Okay.
Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number 112, and authorize the superintendent to award a contract for the Aquarian Charter School roof upgrade project to Wolverine Supply Incorporated for a total award amount of $1,592,000, $1,592,887.
Is there a second? Second. Okay. It's been moved in second. Are there any discussion? Andy, I mean, Member Holloman.
I'll just say briefly, this one's a little more significant than I think some of our ordinary contract improvements. There was an awful lot of discussion around, including Aquarian Charter School roof upgrade. I personally, having spent some time in the building, think that it demonstrates ASD getting every last dollar out of the facility that it can. This is something a lot of people would have torn down, but it's a marvelous school, it's a marvelous environment, and at the time, when the engineer reports it said, taken care of, it can go on into the future for a long ways, it's great to see this finally happen and help make it a dry and safe environment like it should be.
Seeing no further discussion? Please vote. Emily?
Yes.
Miss Donnelly, did you go? You got here? Okay. All right. And that motion passes, seven yays. Right, next?
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 120, and the attached letter in response to the recent violence and acts of hate against Asian-American Pacific Islanders.
So there's, okay, it's been moved in second. We have one person signed up in person to testify, and that's Mike Grunst. Okay, Mr. Grunst is not here. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes.
I was just going to say, at times, it has been called into question about us taking positions on topical issues. You know, we've seen something happen and change in this country. I think it is important that we speak out, that we support this, especially as leaders of a workforce of thousands of people and tens of thousands of students. We need to make it clear that this kind of thing won't be tolerated within the accurate school district.
Thank you, Member Holloman. Any other comments?
Well, I had a bunch of things written down in this fancy system that seemed to have gone poof in the note-taking, but that's okay, I'll rip it. I think one thing that's important that I, and maybe I need to make a motion to amend, is that I would like to see the work of education be a part of this. I would like to see a commitment to accurate and representative curricular materials, because I think those are fundamental to the job that the district does and to preventing dismantling hatred and ignorance and propensity to violence. And so that work of education is critical.
So the process is, you could offer, you could offer amendment? What I would, are there any other comments before I speak to the statement? This is a statement, not a policy.
Okay.
And so the statement, it's the intent of the statement is to reassure our Asian-American and Pacific Islander families that we understand and that we are here and that our schools are safe. So I think what you're asking for might not be appropriate in this email, I mean email, but in this statement, but I absolutely hear what you're saying. And the governance committee is where you would start that process.
Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Higgins, and then, did I see you, Mr. Donnelly? Okay.
I'll just make it real brief. I totally support this, of course, and that's not a problem. I did hear complaints that some people, that when they raise concerns of bullying or other issues, it's not always moved up or acted upon or other issues, and I like the language in here that we report these things. I don't know what students or parents do when they don't feel like it's being, if it's not being addressed in their school. What should I tell them? What should they be told as to how to raise their concerns if they don't feel like it's being handled adequately? Because that's a critical component to ensuring that kids are treated appropriately and that inappropriate conduct, which this thing is trying to address, unacceptable conduct, is addressed. And so I don't know what parents should be told or where to go from that when they feel like it's not being addressed there, but I think that's something to be at least commented on.
Thank you, and I'll let, ask Dr. Bishop if she would.
Thank you, Madam President, to Member Higgins. If it's in a classroom or recess, if it's, you know, younger children are at lunch, we request that they tell an adult, and generally, they're in classes next with a teacher, a counselor. If they feel as though action isn't taken or something continues, behavior, inappropriate behavior continues or conflict continues, then they work with school leadership. If parents work with school leadership and that isn't resolved, certainly, they move to the next level. And if here, the supervisors of schools, if there isn't satisfaction, then there is a complaint process that is addressed, investigated and addressed and can be appealed.
Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I would move to amend by in paragraph four, line one, replace the word equity with equality.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, that most of fails, yes. Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, since that amendment failed, Madam President, the term equality is very controversial in our community. I mean, the term equity is very controversial, as we just went through a major debate about that. And because it is so controversial and can be interpreted in so many ways, I think it would be much more appropriate... I think it would be much more appropriate rather than the first sentence of this paragraph four saying that that must be shared by all people in our community. That goes beyond what this board's opinion is or what the school district does. It seems to be an imposition of thought upon the members of the community to agree with the folks that believe that equity is superior to equality. And I don't think that's appropriate for this board to be telling people how to think. It's perfectly appropriate if it was limited to us in expressing how we feel or how the school district feels. But I don't think it's appropriate to tell the community that we, they, must share our opinion. And it currently reads, "Our district's commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion must be shared by all in our community." I've never, in my 21 years of elected office, I've never seen a resolution that imposed thought upon the community of a controversial subject. And so I would move to amend in paragraph four, line one, the word "by" and replace it with "with", so that the resolution would, if the amendment passed, would read, "Our district's commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion must be shared with all in our community."
Is there a second? Second?
I have a point of information.
Point of information, yes.
To the maker of the motion, I would take "community" in this case to mean the Anchorage School District community. And I think Mr. Donnelly's suggesting it actually means the Anchorage community. But I don't know what the original intent was.
I can speak to the original intent. It was the Anchorage School District community. That's the only community that we can have influence over in our actions and our response.
Well, I would agree with that. I think the amendment would still be appropriate to clarify that. And if it doesn't pass, I would, then I would offer something that clarifies it's the school district community instead of our community.
So right now we have, we have an amendment and a second to change, what would the wording be? To strike the word "by" and replace it with "with"? Any other discussion? Shall we vote? Emily? Hold on. Member Lessons? Okay, we're ready to vote? Okay. Emily? A, is it clear what we're voting on, everybody? Okay. Yes. This is Donnelly, ma'am. Okay, that amendment passes, four yeas to three nays. Okay. Did you have another motion, Mr. Donnelly?
Yes, I have one more amendment, ma'am.
Okay, okay. So will you read your amendment, Mr. Donnelly, and see if we get a second?
Thank you, Madam President. The amendment deals with the contradiction of having books on our website that advocate racial discrimination against Asian-Americans and others with the, obviously, really well intention of this statement. So it would add at the end of the statement that any publications that advocate racial discrimination against Asian-Americans or any other Americans should not be listed as resources or recommended reading on the ASD websites.
Is there a second? Not hearing a second, that motion fails. So we are back to voting on, does anyone else have any amendments? Okay. So we are now back to the main motion as amended. Thank you, Katie. Any discussion? Let's vote.
If nobody else, I wanted to make sure everybody else got to talk.
No, just raise your hand out.
Okay, thank you.
I'll stay with you.
So I do remain concerned that this is a really good statement, but of the dichotomy between this statement and the listing on our website of critical race theory advocates that specifically call for discrimination based on race, which is very frequently targeted against Asian-Americans. Dr. Kendy, whose multiple books are listed there, in his book, How to Be an Anti-Racist, states on page 16, "The only remedy to racist discrimination is anti-racist discrimination. The only remedy to past discrimination is present discrimination. The only remedy to discrimination is future discrimination." And we all know that Asian-Americans have been the target of that discrimination, both in college admissions and recently in Oregon and Washington, the elimination of academic testing because Asians-Americans were outperforming the norm.
Member Donnelly, you are now speaking to your motion, and it failed.
Yeah, I'm speaking to the main motion, Madam Chair, my concern with the main motion. So I wish we would have been consistent in this main motion and not allow books that call for discrimination against Asian-Americans to be on our website. And I think that's really regrettable that we haven't chosen to be consistent with that.
And are there any other comments before I make my comment?
Am I allowed, I'm sorry.
Sure, you are.
Am I allowed to share a comment from a professional society about anti-Asian discrimination and hatred? May I read something in support of this memorandum?
You may speak to-
To add a little bit of context?
This is discussion.
So the American Historical Association is the leading scholarly gathering place for academics within the United States who study history. And earlier, well, just a few days ago, at the end of April, they released a statement that explained that the racialized misogyny explicit in the Atlantic killings is the product of generations-long stereotyping and cultural denigration against Asian-American women in particular. A study conducted by the Center for the Study of Hate and Extremism at California State University San Bernardino has concluded that hate crimes in the United States declined overall by 7% in 2020 compared to 2019. At the same time, such crimes against Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders increased 150%. For months, high-level federal officials in the United States referred to COVID-19 as, quote, "the China virus", and, quote, "the Kung flu". The baseless and irresponsible scapegoating evokes the assaults in San Francisco 121 years ago, when members of the Chinese community were blamed for an outbreak of an epidemic, their properties seized and homes destroyed. Indeed, the spurious association of the Asian-American and Pacific Islander community with COVID-19 is another example of Americans blaming their fellow Americans for larger social evils. The murder in Atlanta of eight people on March 16th, including six women of Asian descent, suggests we have not transcended this history. I just wanted to share this professional statement because I believe that it echoes and underscores the work that this memorandum is trying to do here in Anchorage.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Member Holloman?
I'd like to also comment that I think there are times when we take words literally that are being used in a much more nuanced way. I don't think it's a fair statement to say that universities are discriminating against Asian-Americans. There's no purge of Asian-Americans. There's no desire, effort to keep them off campus or other things like that. But there is a desire to balance the membership of the student population. And we've been working on that for a long time, ever since we started letting women go to college and black people and any number of other groups. We have, universities have controlled their populations in order to try to achieve a balance as a way to get to equality. And I think it goes back to that sort of yin and yang between equity and equality. I personally don't need equity as an elder white male. But there are other groups of people that do because they have been systematically denied for a long time. It is ironic when we have an emerging group that's able to capture a disproportionate share based strictly on merit. It's also interesting when after decades of discrimination, suddenly we're all about merit and no discrimination at all. I, and I also say, I think this gets a little bit sideways with what we're really talking about, which is attacks and violence and really direct harm. So I don't see a conflict between books that may discuss this academically. They're not promoting racism. They're not promoting disenfranchising a group of people. They are talking about achieving a state where eventually equality could just be the way we go and there wouldn't be any weird outcome from it that's so lopsided. So I will, I think the motion is written well as it is and will support it.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes.
I just briefly wanted to speak in support of the statement. I really believe that it, what we want to do is speak in support of our students, our staff of Asian-American and Pacific Island descent. And for me, it's that simple. We are stating that we support them and that we stand behind them and that we don't tolerate any discrimination or racism towards them and their families. For me, it's that simple. So I do speak in support of it.
Thank you, Member Wilson. And let me make sure, Member Donnelly. Everybody gets a chance. Anybody else like to speak?
I would like to make a comment. In fact, I don't think I want to make the comment. I think, I don't think I want to make the comment. Go on, Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam President. The Chinese-American Citizens Alliance, which was founded in 1895, one of the oldest advocacy groups for Chinese-Americans and fairness to poised nationwide discrimination and violence against Chinese-Americans. Recently, the New York chapter came out with a very strong, vigorous objection to critical race theory, calling it a hateful, divisive, manipulative fraud.
Madam President, point of order.
State your point.
Mr. Member, Board Member Donnelly is speaking to critical race theory, which, to the best of my knowledge, doesn't appear in this document. And so I would ask that we put this to another time.
Thank you. And with that, I'm going to call for the vote. Oh, yeah. After Emily has her say.
I wanted to sort of echo what was previously said. I am an Asian-American woman who's living here, and I think that the basis of this is truly just showing your support. And I think that, for the time being, with this motion, that's all you, that's all you need to do and that's all that should be done and is hopefully being done. So I guess I'll segue towards, from the student voice, I would say yes to this.
Thank you. I'm going to call for the vote. You are voting on the statement as amended. Memorandum 120, as amended. Emily?
Yes.
Members, please vote. And that motion passes unanimously, seven yeas. Okay, where are we? We have one more.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 122 and pass revision to Board Policy 9320.
Is there a second? It's been moved in second. That we approve memorandum 122. Discussion? I see Carl, Member Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. My understanding is that the effective date retroactive to January 1, 2020 is part of the amendment to this policy, the portion of the by-retroactive effective date.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. All right, discussion. Would you speak to your amendment, please?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the revision to the bylaws and wholeheartedly support. I think that it is important that we allow for safe interactions during a pandemic. I do think it isn't in our best interest to retroactively impose this as the board has adjourned at this point. And I think we should look to move forward. And it's just best practice, I think, and something that I would support if we were not retroactively modifying it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else wish to speak to the amendment? All right, seeing no one. Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. When COVID first hit, we were instructed that we couldn't attend meetings. We were instructed that, under the existing guidelines from the city emergency declaration, we weren't going to have in-person meetings at all. This recognizes that that was a governmental instruction to this board not to have those meetings. Some people have said that, "Well, obviously you were under a mandate not to do it, so the policy didn't apply." And all this does is clarify that the policy didn't apply while we were under legal order not to be in-person at those meetings. So eliminating the retroactivity would eliminate a lot of the reason for doing it because of the, some of the misstatements about the board should have been here in person for every one of those meetings because we legally weren't able to under the emergency order. So I think it's completely appropriate to cover that time. I was told multiple times that the Governance Committee was already working on this and going to take care of it. They didn't do so. And that's why I came forward now.
So the motion before you, us, right now, is to remove the retroactivity from the main motion? Yes. Mr. Higgins?
Well, I'm going to support the change because that school board made a decision, whether it was, in your opinion, appropriately or not, and I understand that. But I'm not going to go track and try to second-guess what a board did or what they didn't do before we get on the board. That's my concern here. There were issues here to be addressed. my concern here. There were issues here to be addressed. I, I sat next to a school board member with terminal illness that, that was, you know, on the board and, and had attendance questions. And I've had, uh, other board members of the, for personal reasons, had issues, but we didn't go retro to anything. We didn't adjust it. Looking at the whole policy makes a lot of sense. Um, but I just don't see going back and saying that this applies to when another board sat here and could have made changes and chose not to. The board had the ability not to enforce any of those regulations and choose not to. I think that's appropriate. They recognize that, that, that this didn't apply and they made, uh, appropriately. They haven't taken any action. So I just think it's, going retro is a, is a, is a dangerous precedent. I've never seen that before and I would rather deal only with things going forward. Thank you.
Any other comments? Call the vote on the, on the amendment. All right. Did you have a question?
Point of clarification. So what we were voting on is just.
It's to remove the, striking the retroactive date from the policy.
Thank you.
You are voting to either to strike or not the retroactive date from the main call, the, the main, um, motion.
So voting yes would be in support of striking the.
A vote of yes would be you want to strike.
Thank you.
Yes. It's okay. We're learning. All right, Emily?
Yes.
Everybody else vote? Everybody voted? And that passes, uh, six yeas, one nay. All right, we are now at the main, uh, having taken out that piece. Uh, we are now back to the, original. As amended, yes. Any discussion? Call the vote. Emily?
Yes.
Okay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And that brings us to non-action items. Does anyone, uh, would anyone like to pull something to have a conversation on tonight? I mean, Miss, Member Higgins?
I know I resemble the remark, but it sounds so old. Uh, I, I wanna, I got a question in regards to number one, uh, and number four.
We'll pull number one and number four. Anyone else?
I'd like to poll number five, if that means that we're going to talk about it.
Yes.
Great.
One, four, and five. Okay. All right, Mr. Higgins, you pulled number one.
Yeah, I, I, thank you. I appreciate that. I looked at the, uh, at this particular one. I found it kind of interesting. I realize professional services, and it gave it about evaluation criteria to look at various, um, uh, of the proposals and, you know, includes project approach, methods, management, firms, experience, proposed staff, and workload and resources. I've never seen it before where it gives no mention to cost as a factor that's looked at from a reasonable standpoint. Could you think before you make the selection, you kind of want to know what the cost is or some factor in there? And it does, it doesn't read that way and I might be misreading it, but it seems kind of unusual to me that if you're going to go out with an RFP, that you don't put something from a financial standpoint in there from the public interest standpoint. So that's confusing to me.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I would like to request, uh, Jim Anderson and Dave Whiting to respond in regard to that question.
Uh, yes, thank you, Superintendent Bishop. Uh, through the board president to Member Higgins, um, you are correct for A and E, which is architectural engineering design services solicitations. It is illegal for ASD to use cost as a evaluation criteria as it would conflict with the Federal Brooks Act. So what we, uh, so we are unable to do that. We use technical evaluation criteria to establish the highest scoring offer to then negotiate a fair and equitable cost with.
Yeah. Does that answer your question, Member Higgins?
I guess I should cut it on. It sounded a little mute, but I'll try it. Uh, I, I guess that's interesting information. I wasn't aware of that. And so it's, the cost is then discussed afterwards? Or is it, you know, how is the cost determined after the selection is?
Uh, thank you for the question. Uh, through the board president to Member Higgins, uh, how it works is we establish a highest scoring offer. At that point, we issue an intent to negotiate and we enter into negotiations regarding the cost. And that negotiations is based on the profile of the project, meaning the complexity of it, uh, the multiple disciplines within the construction activities of the subsequent project, the complexity of how many subcontractors there are. And based on that, we enter into that, we conduct those negotiations and we, we have a metric that we measure those costs based on construction cost. So if, I think where you're getting to, if the highest scoring offer is trying to overcharge us for those costs per the metric, we would then discard that offer and move to the next highest scoring offer to negotiate a fair and equitable agreement.
Any other questions on, uh, memorandum 107? Okay, let's move on. Uh, Member Higgins, you also pulled four.
That better again? I'm sorry. I'll get used to this after a bit. Um, uh, my question on number four is that the, the contracts that are reported, does that include all contracts that were expanded by that amount during the quarter? So if there was, you know, if we added a hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, and does it cover all types of contracts that are let during that period? Whether it's professional services, whether it's, uh, you name it, whatever types of, of, of acquisitions we make, does it cover all, all, uh, contracts during that period, between one and five hundred?
I'm sorry, Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I, I would request Jim Anderson and Dave Whiting to, uh, answer the question again, uh, the new question.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Uh, through the board president to Mr. Higgins, this particular report is contracts awarded through competitive solicitations that are awarded, uh, in the range of $100,000 to $500,000. And it would be, uh, any type of competitively awarded contracts.
So as a follow-up, let me just, uh, ask, is there a report at some point of non-competitively bids that we get on a regular basis?
Yes, sir. There are in board policy, uh, under section, board policy 3312, AR 3312 dot one. It provides all of the annual reporting and quarterly reporting for the board. So it describes all of those categories. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on item four? All right, moving on. Miss, Member Lessons, number five.
Great, thank you so much. Um, I've been thinking about this for a number of days and I appreciated the testimony this evening that we listened to. Um, one of the questions that's really, well, I have a couple of questions. One of them is it, is it true there are only 11 sixth grade students at that school right now? That's what the data dashboard suggested and that's not a whole lot of kids.
At Eagle Academy.
At Eagle Academy Charter School. Yes, that was just.
Thank you. Um, through the president to Member Lessons, I can, uh, request the principal, she's here, to come forward, but I believe so, but it's a pandemic year, so some students.
It's a good question of just being COVID and those students have elected to stay home. Okay. The, the other question was what, and we received a number of documents, um, attached to this memorandum. What is the effect of funding for the expanded K through eight program, uh, detracting, taking away funding from other area middle schools? How will that affect pupil teacher ratios?
Uh, through the president to Member Lessons, uh, this gives us an opportunity to look, uh, their class sizes. We can assume that the matriculation of students, uh, whatever that class size is. So we heard from, I believe, the, the fifth graders that this would come into effect when they're in seventh grade. So it's not the sixth graders this year. Um, depending on the number of students that stayed, that would be about one teacher, uh, but, um, not necessarily, uh, removed from a school, uh, they would just continue. So depending on what schools choose, students would have chosen to go to, uh, it might have been spread across four different schools. And so then you would look at just student counts in those schools. So it isn't a one for one. Uh, we offer such diverse choices that, uh, our budgets reflect, uh, student choice and parent choice. And then, um, staffing is, uh, given by PTR accordingly. So it really would, uh, if the members that are in fifth grade now come from different schools across Anchorage and they would be going to different middle schools, the effect might be zero because they're be so small. If they all say we're at one, the effect would be one. So it's just determined by that pupil teacher ratio and where they would have gone. That's a, a great question, but, uh, generally what we've done is just funded where students land and teachers follow students. But because it's a charter school, we don't have a set. We would have to review where all the fifth graders presently, where their draw area is and/or would they have gone to another alternative school in essence. Uh, so we, we just don't have all the data to, to be able to determine that. But in effect, it would just be the, the PTR, but you would have to know where they would have gone.
May I follow up? So, um, thank you so much. Um, so this would not expand the district's budget. It would be a reallocation of existing funds that follow the student essentially.
Through the president to Member Lessons, uh, that's absolutely correct unless perhaps the school attracted, uh, the same amount of students from outside to come back in. So if they attracted, they're matriculating and starting another class of 24, if by chance their school attracted 24 more students from out of the district, it would be a zero sum. So it, it really depends on from whence they've come and where they would go. But generally, if no additional students are added, it would just rearrange where the funding is. You good?
Okay. Any other questions? Item five. Member, Member Wilson?
I, I'm not familiar with Eagle Academy Charter. Is this a school where students could choose to start in middle school there in seventh grade or do they have to go through the entire program?
Through the president, um, to Member Wilson, uh, I do know that presently outside of seventh and eighth, they may start at a later date. We have, uh, quite a bit of interest. Uh, the curriculum, it does take a little bit of time to catch up, but students are successful. With a good start, they can understand the new curriculum. So they have, it isn't like an immersion where the, the second language is a huge part of it. Uh, but, um, they do accept students in upper grades independently of starting there from kindergarten.
All right. Any other comments? Alrighty. Yes, Member Donley.
Yeah, it's, uh, one of the top five performing reading schools, one of the top five performing, if not the top performing math school because I think for the large, large part because they use Saxon math, which I had advocated for before we adopted the current curriculum. The really ironic thing is that we've got Eagle Academy and Northern Lights ABC and three other schools, I think, using Saxon math, but the district didn't feel it was, uh, appropriate to even have a pilot program to examine it when we adopted the new math, common core math curriculum. So, uh, we have a real proven winner there and, uh, I think it totally deserves support. I think nationally, the K through eight model is, is gaining tremendous support. And there are other districts that are transforming over to more universal K through eight.
Thank you, Member Donley. Dr. Bishop?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And K through eight schools are gaining, uh, um, interest across the country. Uh, I would like to share, and we shared with Member Donley, that, um, the publishing company is no longer publishing Saxon. Uh, and so that we did do our due diligence and understanding, uh, the supply and demand. I, I know that the schools, uh, that presently teach it have gone out and tried to buy everything that's out there, but for such a large district as we are, uh, the publisher is no longer, uh, publishing Saxon math. And I, for disclosure, was a principal who taught with Saxon math and I loved it as well. Thank you.
Okay, Member Higgins?
Just a clarification, the, the non-action items, I realize a number of these is providing information. Number five seems to be a little bit more, it's an expansion of the charter school. Is this, is this something that comes back to the board for approval and is it just information at this point?
It's information at this point? We'll vote, it'll come back next time.
It will come back. Okay, thank you.
It will. Anybody else wish to speak before, hold on, Mr. Donley, I see you. Okay, Member Donley.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Madam Superintendent, I've been in contact with, uh, Max, uh, Saxon distributors and some of the leading, uh, proponents of Saxon. They guarantee me that if we wanted to go with Saxon, we could get access to those textbooks. They are not discontinuing the home versions of it, so they are fully available to the district if we ever did chose to go with Saxon math.
Any other comments on the memorandum? All right, seeing none. We are now at public testimony. I, I don't have anyone signed up. Anybody present who'd like to testify? Right. We are now at our, uh, board adminis, school board comments and administration comments. Any comments from the board? Final thoughts? Yes?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd serve a notice of reconsideration on memo 115.
You would like a reconsideration? Is there a second? Where is 115?
Point of order doesn't require a second.
Oh, the personnel report.
Yeah, it does not require a second. Uh, uh, well, maybe I got my memos wrong here. Let me double check.
The personnel report?
I'm sorry. You are correct. Uh, it was memorandum 122. I apologize.
122.
It doesn't require a second. It's not going to happen at this time. If it, if, if it's brought up, it would be brought up at the next meeting.
Okay. So what was, help me understand what, so you want reconsideration of this at the next meeting?
I'm providing notice of reconsideration. It's discretionary whether or not to bring up the reconsideration at the next meeting.
Well, I show it needs a second, Mr. Donley. So, uh, it does.
Yeah, I think we should give Roberts.
I mean, we have already taken action on that item.
I don't think notice requires it. Maybe bringing it up, bring back, it's a bring back motion. So this is different than the notice. This is the move to bring it back. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Donley. Uh, we will reconsider it, I think, uh.
Yeah.
Okay. Right. He gave notice. Yes.
Madam President, I just want to say welcome to the new board, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And as you guys can see, I also want to welcome the new board members. And it's great to hear your questions. And we're all here to learn and, and, and get it right. So keep those questions coming. And the only other thing I would like to say is that this is Teacher Appreciation Week. Our website's got lots of great stuff on it. So send a comment to your, your, the teacher, your, your, your teacher, whether you're teaching you now or taught you before. And then I did want to acknowledge the work of Jacob Barra, Leah Maltby. If you have not seen their portraits of those who serve, I mean, it's amazing project. I think he did, they did share that with us through email. And this is Asian American Pacific Islander Month in Alaska, May 1st through the end of the month. So I did want to make sure everybody knew that. And of course, saying goodbye to Emily again and wishing you well. I know you're going to do great. And then I think Carl has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to formally thank outgoing board members, Hildy, Vicayla, Mitchell, and Marseth for their service and express how excited I am to work with the current board and happy Teacher Appreciation Week to everyone.
Yes, thank you. Other comments? Don't be shy. What about the administration? Anybody else? Y'all know I've been waiting to do this all night, right?
I'm just going to say thank you to the members of the administration for introducing yourselves during the meet and greet. And I look forward to getting to know more of you and the work that you do and finding ways to support you.
Absolutely. Motion to adjourn. I just want to. It's been moved in second that we adjourn.